... provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.1-3771D, the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that Akimak County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered. Second.
Motion in the second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. But will the clerk call roll, please?
President.
President.
Present.
President.
Here.
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 President.
Can we please stand for the pledge?
Let's do this through the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes as presented from the oh-four, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five meeting. Second.
Motion in the second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion on the two long-term suspensions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the long-term suspensions as amended for cases oh-five, oh-six, twenty-five, oh-seven, and oh-eight. Second.
Motion in the second to approve the amended long-term suspensions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Abstain.
One exception. Next up, we have student recognition. Oh, he had to make a motion. One more motion.
Madam Chair, I move that, we move to authorize our superintendent, Mr. Lawrence, to execute a settlement from a former employee appointment. Second.
Motion in a second to override the settlement, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is anybody gonna introduce this? Yes, yes, yes.
Good evening, everybody. So, I apologize that we only have a few students here tonight. I think part was due to the location, being it's far north, and the majority of our programs are at the Tuna and Doa, and then all of our elementary schools. And due to the time, many of our parents at the elementary level said, because we have students ages two through twenty-two that we would have recognized. But, um, so we do have a few here, South Dakota Skidds.
Well, they should get extra love.
That's right. But we're recognizing our students that participated in Special Olympics.
All right, good evening, everyone. So, the, all of the students who are in the self-contained setting are housed at Nandoa High School, Nandoa Middle School, doesn't matter if they're all the way up here, Chiquita, Arcadia, they all come down, they're my babies. Tonight, I have one here, Mr. Damian Savage. So Damian is one of our babies, I'm sorry, young people that participated in Special Olympics. They do a variety of events, and he was able to make it here tonight, so thank you for his mom. Deidre bringing him up here, and thank you Damian for coming up as well.
Thank y'all for coming.
And now we have Chiquita Combined School.
We have one student that participated, this is Mason Taylor.
Hi.
Mason, what did you do?
Checkmate.
You did what?
Checkmate.
You did checkmate, yeah? And then you're participating in the bowling too, aren't you?
Yes.
Yeah. So he's gonna continue that, that next weekend, I think?
The Special Olympics Games, first weekend in June.
I mean, the bowling that he's doing?
Yeah.
That tournament, that's next weekend?
At the Special Olympics Games, they do it, and then also next weekend.
Yeah, so he's got a tournament next weekend he'll be doing for bowling as well. So, good job, Mason.
And I believe that's everybody that came, unless I'm missing anybody that came, I don't think so. It's a Special Olympics.
Okay. Well, I'll talk with you later, and maybe we can arrange something.
Do another one that's maybe at McThompson, so it would be a little more central, would be helpful, so. But, um, what they were talking about for Mason is the Area Nineteen, which is the local Special Olympics organization that's outside of your school. And so, at the event, Tasha, who is the region rep, she sets up the table to try to recruit kids and their parents to have them join in the community events that they do. And so she was talking about the Community Olympics will be in June, where the kids can be. And we did have a basketball team, but she said they have...
Transportation issue.
Yeah, transportation issue, so now they're doing a bowling league.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
But thank you for the opportunity to recognize the kids.
We're proud of all of our athletes.
Yes. They had a great time, if you were able to come Friday, it was nice and warm, I've got a lot of great pictures, and Dr. Johnson sent me a load of pictures, so we had a really good time that day.
It was very nice.
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have, um, a third reading for school capacity. And I believe, um, the entire policy was deleted, and then there was questions about if parts of it were incorporated into other policies, and were those...
You can't hear you.
Is this better? Is that better? Okay. So this is a third reading for school capacity, and I believe the policy is due to be deleted, but the board had questions, if parts of the policy were gonna be incorporated into other policies. And...
Since, since then, staff has addressed my concerns, and the, um, the standards are actually incorporated in state regulations that we follow.
Okay. I did not get those dates. Okay, so are we good to go forward then with this third reading? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the third reading of the school's capacity policy?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the policy for school capacity, F-B dash R, as presented. Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, yes ma'am. Come on, gentle place, I would offer that. This is probably the second time we've had to do a third reading. Am I correct that when I have a question as a board member, between the first reading and typically two weeks for the sec, before the second reading, that I can ask that question offline? I don't have to wait for a meeting? And I, I, thank you. So, I just wanted to be sure to put that, that into the atmosphere. I think that we have every right to question, and the timeliness in the future may, you know, be very helpful, so that we never penalize, right, because often these policy updates are driven at the state level.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a second reading for our field trip policy. And I believe there was a few additions from the original, and I read through it, it looks good to me, does anyone, everyone, is there a motion for the field trip policy?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the field trip policy as presented.
Is there a second?
Second. Did you have something to say, stuff?
I, I, I was trying, I was trying to ask you a question, I'm sorry.
Okay, this is the time.
Um, I think, um, you should, um, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I was wondering if we wanted to, to make one more little tweak to it?
Did you mark your books?
And what, what would that be?
Um, under Section F, I'm sorry, I'm collecting.
Chaperones is Section F?
Yes, um, I, I think it would be helpful if we also added a, a number three to make sure that the chaperones are following our policy on volunteers, since they are volunteering for the preparation.
That way they're, that way they would be working together.
It's, um, KK dash R is the policy.
So number three would say, policy KK dash R would be followed?
Yes.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
What is it? What is it saying?
It's the volunteer policy?
Yeah. Oh, you, it, it talks about the requirement to be a volunteer. So, um, who made the motion?
Friendly amendment? Madam Chair, I guess I remove my previous motion, and would like to re-votion the, um...
I think, I think we've, it's no extent, we have to vote on it, or, or you have to amend it.
Okay, I want to amend the, the field...
Jamie. Right?
You want to amend the motion? We vote?
No, we gotta vote it.
I just made a motion. What motion in second?
You have to counsel that motion and give a move.
No, that's wrong. Jamie, do you know?
Greta.
You, Greta doesn't know. So there is a motion and a second, and then during the discussion, there was a suggestion that we add, um, a, an item about connecting this to our volunteer policy. So our question is, can we make a friendly amendment and include that and continue with the vote?
We don't, we don't talk about these rules, it doesn't matter. I mean, I don't know what we're adding. What are we doing, are we doing a, a reading?
No, we, this, this is the second reading, we're just adding one bullet point to, so that in our field trip policy, it's that they have to follow the volunteer policy, because the chaperones fall under the, I guess, they're part of the volunteers.
Yeah, I don't have any concern with that, but what would the initial motion, is this difficult for this section?
The, um, so the initial motion was to pass this policy, to approve it, to approve this policy. So...
Move to approve it as amended.
Move to approve it as amended.
Can I move to approve it as amended? Second.
I think we just vote now. Right? Okay. Motion, there's a, there's a, a motion in second to approve this policy as amended, and the amendment is just to put a, mention the volunteer policy, so the chaperones, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No.
And I think the purpose of the, uh, is that, so we have some... We want all of our chaperones and volunteers to go through a screening process, since these volunteers are gonna be spending the ho, in the, they're gonna be spending several days in a hotel with children, they need to have some sort of background checkup.
That's not what you just stated, right? That's not what you...
So the motion passed.
That's not what you...
Okay, Mr. Kilman, you're up.
Welcome to Chiquita Combined School. Um, we're gonna start first with our student representative, Mr. Jakai Simon.
Nice to meet you all. Good evening, everybody, it's nice to meet you all, my name is Jakai Simon, I'm a...
It's the little one, I think it's the little one.
Good evening, everybody, my name, uh, my name is Jakai Simon, it's nice to meet you all. I'm a sophomore here in Chingstake High School, I'm gonna say a, say a few good words about here, but one word I wanna say is, is community. It's such a community that teachers who spent their high school years here came back to teach, it's such a community that if I came in here and put my head down, if I wasn't having a good day, I would have twenty people say, what's wrong, how can I help you? And I wanna say, the principals and the teachers here are doing an amazing job by personalizing their lives and their students, just so they're doing an amazing job in their SOWs or just life lessons in general. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, that was very nice.
Next, we have our PTA president, Ms. Miranda Dunston.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I wanna say Jakai is also an amazing pony, if you've ever seen him with our cheerleaders, he rocks that, so he is great. Thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight, welcome to Chiquita. We have a very active PTSA here on the island, our families, our communities, our teachers, students, parents, and especially our community itself, the businesses really contribute a lot. This week, for instance, is our P, I feel like I'm peeking at you, I'm sorry, is our PTA National Teacher Appreciation Week, so we kicked it off with a nice breakfast for the teachers on Monday morning, today we fed them a nice picnic lunch, our theme is that life is an adventure and you're giving us the road to success. So we are doing everything that has to do with a road trip. So tomorrow they'll have road trip snacks, and then on Thursday and Friday, we have gifts for them. We have so many of our vendors around town that have donated gifts for our teachers, we are just very blessed. I also wanna bring up two more things, we have our prom this Friday, and if you've ever seen an after-prom, you've, if you've been to Chiquita, you'll never see another one like it, it is amazing. These members of our PTSA have worked tirelessly, they are still working tirelessly as we are here right now, putting on an amazing after-prom, they have gotten over twenty thousand dollars worth of donations for these kids to be able to win computers and refrigerators and kayaks and everything that you would never imagine. We are just very, very blessed. And finally, as you know, this, we need a new sound system at our school, so PTSA has really been working hard on that this year. It's gonna cost us about twelve thousand dollars, and we got donations from the town of Chiquita last year to help with that, but we have had to come up with the remaining, they donated five thousand, and we have to come up with the remaining, so we sold our Chiquita gopli games, and we have a wonderful concert going on, May seventeenth, the community center is donating the space for us to be able to use it, Mr. Alton is gonna feature some of his students, as well as we have other local bands coming to play a Woodstock tribute. Everything that is raised there, the CCA is gra, graciously helping us do this, and everything that we raise, they are donating toward that sound system. So we have a lot of exciting things going, and I've probably talked too long, but thank you very much for your time, and if you ever wanna see something fun and exciting happen, come join the PTA. All right, y'all have a great night.
So, now I'm gonna introduce Mr. Alton, he is our band teacher, and we're gonna get a special treat before I give a short presentation by our band students, and this is, you can, you'll take it from here.
All right. I, I'd just like to say, after twenty years, I'm really excited that we're gonna be able to have concerts in our gymnasium auditorium because of the soundproofing, sound condition that you guys are doing for us. We've, we've been running them in here the entire time that I've been here, because the echoes in there are so bad, and it's gonna be amazing to actually have, you know, concerts with the stage and everything, but, um, this group, uh, we've done a lot this year, we've played for the Cultural Alliance, we've played for the veterans, we've played for the elementary school, we've played for the school, we've played for the parents. I've got about four different bands going this year, and this is basically my first block, which involves everything from eighth to eleventh grade, and I'm missing two of them, one of them happens to be the drummer, so you guys can hear me play drums this evening. And we're just gonna do one song really quick, and I'd just like to say, all of you people who are saying you can't hear, um, this will be pretty loud. Are we on? We're just gonna do Jailhouse Rock, um, this is one of the songs that we're doing at the Woodstock tribute. One, two, three, go.
Thank you, guys, thank you, Mr. Alton.
How come you weren't up there, Mr. Kilman?
That's a story, um, actually I could share with you.
That was very good, we are, we're very impressed, you all, nice job.
When I was in third grade, my, my, my music teacher, we had a little concert for Christmas, she came up to me and she said, uh, uh, you, just, just move your lips, don't say anything. You won't be up there. So thank you all for coming out, um, I wanna see if I can, Greta, do you wanna do this? Our focus this year has been in two areas, Achievement Gap English and College and Career So we're gonna take a look at the next couple of slides, I'll show our English subgroup data for the last three years and how they compare in each subgroup, that's all students, next would be our subgroup for black students, next, subgroup for white students, and the last subgroup that we represent would be students with disabilities. And you can see there's a little drop-off there. Because we have a smaller number of students, each student that doesn't pass counts for a larger percentage, so if five students don't pass at a larger school, the percentage's gonna be smaller, it's gonna be small, but if five students don't pass here, the percentage is gonna be much larger, so it's a, that is a challenge. The next slide, couple of slides that you'll see, is a representation of our data for reading, writing, and math, and you can see how the scores stack up against the division in the state, and our school is on the left. So reading performance for all students, is what you're looking at now, next would be writing performance, and then next, we have math performance, and as you can see, we, we compared pretty well, very well. Um, on this slide, you're just, you're gonna see our subgroup data for English portrayed numerically, and if you look down at students with disabilities, you'll see what I just said earlier reflected, how much of a difference the number tested, uh, number of, of students that are tested affects the percentage. So, the previous year, we had forty-two students testing in that subgroup, this past year, we had twenty-nine, so that's a difference of thirteen. So you can see how it does happen in fact. Next, we're looking at our science scores, our science scores continue to be very good, even at the middle school level, we're doing very well. For attendance, uh, last year we were in the rig, or the year before last, last year we went to the green with a reduction of over a ten percent. So, areas for improvement continue to be Achievement Gap for English and College and Career Readiness. As we look at some of the things that we're doing for Achievement Gap English, I think it's important to have, uh, resources that are available to address this area, or any area in need, but it's more important to use the right resource to address the needs that you are trying to target. Lexia and computer programs help, but it's people, not programs, that make the difference. So my personal belief is, what makes a difference when we're talking about school improvement is getting the right people on the bus, or, or the right people in the right place, so to speak. So as you look at the bullets, statements up there, the last two statements are the most important, are extremely important. Pairing of co-teaching groups with teachers, teaching to their strengths, and strategically placing students on caseloads based on academic needs, emotional needs, and personalities, both by the teacher and the student, relationships are important. The other standard that we, uh, we're focusing on, college, career, and civic readiness, uh, the school counselor's been working hard to make sure our high school students are working to meet the standard. We created a check and balance system to make sure students are coded correctly, we've been having some issues with that. Coded correctly when test results and certifications are sent to the state, that's gonna help us out a lot this year with that. This year, we have sixty-three percent of our juniors and seniors enrolled in two or more dual enrollment classes, a hundred percent of our high school students are taking corresponding CTE classes for certification, and we have ten eighth graders enrolled at the Aerospace Academy at Eastern Shore for next year. So, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kilman? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
A very nice presentation. Thank you. Thank you very much. A very nice presentation.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay. Attendance zones. Mr. Reader?
Good afternoon or evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I'm coming now. Last year, we switched elementary zoning. So I guess now that's gonna be correlating into middle and high school because the fifth grade students that went to different schools now will be going to sixth grade, which means the zones will change for Arcadia, Nandua, and Shigatik. So this would just be letting you know that many new students that are moving to that area, so many students that moved to the new zoning areas that we adopted last year would also go to their own schools.
Please, a man?
Any questions?
Do we need to update that?
I mean, it was pre-slides. This is more just like a...
Update?
Yeah, just that it's moving to middle and high school and there's no...
Any questions for Mr. Reader?
So bringing it in, bringing the new students into the different schools, is it rural in each school or is it beneficial?
Yeah.
I think we are, consider us updated. Thank you. Next up, Ms. Only, retention bonus criteria. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Bennett. Mr. Bennett?
All right, good evening. I got a PowerPoint. It's gonna be short, but it's kinda gonna go over some of the projects that are upcoming. And since Greta knows I'm dangerous with a clicker, she's gonna handle all that tonight. So what I've done is just kinda got some pictures of painting projects. This is, we're gonna be painting K-Tank Elementary this year, complete interior painting classrooms, hallways, bathrooms, everything. Arcadia Middle and Nandua Middle, both middle schools, we're gonna paint all the common areas, hallways, bathrooms, cafeterias, the gymnasium, both of those. So it's gonna be a busy summer on painting, and we're working around summer school schedules and we've made some changes. I've worked with Ms. Taylor on some of that. It's worked well. Shigatik combined, baseball backstop. Those of you that are here know how bad it is, and I've heard about all the baseballs that we lose and different things. So I've got prices on that, and we will move forward with that project this summer. Not only that, but we're gonna replace some of the fencing out here. And it's rusted. It's a lot of fence work to be done up here this summer. Elementary school work that we got going on, we're gonna be replacing the stage curtains, a number of them. And these pictures kinda show you why. These stage curtains are old. They're faded, torn. The fire retardant is wearing out on them, so I mean, the fire marshal even recommended we replace them. So we've got that going on. Also, gonna do partition walls at some of the schools, the walls. The partition walls, a lot of them have been used and don't function properly. So we're gonna get all that taken care of this summer, hopefully. Sidewalk projects, and this kinda just shows as we move forward with some of the projects in the past, like the therapeutic playgrounds, pavilions. We've got sidewalks in a lot of places, but we don't have sidewalks going to these places where a lot of our students with disabilities need a sidewalk to walk to get there or a wheelchair. And so we're gonna work this summer to get sidewalks everywhere that we need them at the elementary schools for these projects that have happened over the past couple of years. High school sidewalks, and my pictures are terrible, but we'll be putting sidewalks in at both Nandua and Arcadia High Schools from the concessions, the ticket location at Nandua to the field. And you can kinda maybe see it on the, one on the left-hand side. And then at Arcadia, I'm working with Principal O'Shea, and we're gonna kinda go in by the ticket booth and then go by the concession and work it down where it goes. We've got handicap accessible ramps and handicap seating at these locations. So this will afford people the opportunity to get there and utilize those spaces. Pungatik and Nandua auxiliary gyms. I got really good news on that. I had pre-bid meetings today for both of those and had thirteen contractors show up from both Virginia and Barreland. So a lot of interest in that project. The bids are due on May twenty-second. Now, we just gotta hope the bids come in favorably, and we will get those projects into works. Hopefully, if things go well and the bids come in the way I anticipate, we could be breaking ground on some of these projects probably in July. So hopeful that we have the opportunity. Shigatik Elementary, auxiliary gym concept. Kinda got a picture of Barre. You can't see it as well as I could on my computer, but there's a green line that outlines that whole property of Shigatik Elementary. You'll see towards the left-hand side of it, a lot of that space is North Akamak Little League. So a lot of that there. So we gotta look at what's available. I'm gonna be working with V Design on some concepts that may show an auxiliary gym. They may show cafeteria expansion. Gonna kick around a lot of ideas, 'cause I mean, we don't have a lot of space to work with. So everything there, V is gonna have a proposal to me later this week. And hopefully get to designing stuff, work with the civil team to find out, you know, where we can build up here, where we can't build, and kinda go from there. So I hope over the coming months, I'll have updated information on that.
Mr. Bennett, are you gonna look from this out on his bus route that through there too?
I don't know. We'll have to see. Okay. What's the next slide? Just this is other notable projects. We got a lot going on, a lot of stuff, you know, facility types, plumbing, and different things. So hopefully, we get all this accomplished. Some of it may carry over as the school year, some of it went to break. I think, the way I understand it best, I got the I.C. curriculum for 2026 to get this stuff done. So I'm trying to get to Boston to knock out. You'll notice there's one project that got eliminated from my slide presentation, like, that's Akamak Primary. You asked me to come back to this meeting tonight and give an update. I met with Ms. Harkins this morning, Harkins Contracting. They spent a long time with the Surety Company on Friday, the bonding company. This time, they are not gonna be able to secure bonding for this project. So the bonding company suggested to them that they work with us. And I met with her and an attorney this morning, and I have the AI contract in front of me. Part of the cause of this contract is termination and stipulations. We, as the owner, can terminate this contract for convenience at any time. Fortunately for us, the time is right. We've not done anything. We got, they secured the building permit, and we got billed for payout number one, which I held. I didn't pay any money for anything there. So I received a formal request from them today for us to terminate for convenience on the owners. So we'll terminate the contract with your approval tonight. We'll terminate the contract, and then we determine how to move forward. My recommendation's gonna be we do terminate, and that we, based on the level of competition that I saw today for those two auxiliary gyms, I think we'll be in a good position to rebid this project. I think we'll get maybe, I think some of the contracts that were bid at the first time may not bid at this time because there were a couple of them, I don't know if I can say names here, but casual contractors really high in the first go-round. They may not rebid. But we may have new people come to the table this go-round that will bid the project. Ideally, if we go that route, I'd like to somewhat fast-track things and get it back out to bid, and then have bids due probably with the three- to four-week period after that, and give the new potential bidders time to put a good bid together and then go from there. And hopefully still, you know, break ground on this project in early summer. You know, we're here in May now, so it'll be June to get some stuff sorted out. But I think we're still in a good place on it, and hopefully we'll go smoothly.
It's all cleaned out. That phase is done.
Yeah, we're done with that. We rushed to get that done to meet a date, but, so we're ready to go. And really, don't have much on the architectural side to update. Some questions did come up during the pre-bid time contracts, some questions. So we're gonna get some clarification where we don't have to deal with those questions that clear out. But it would be minimal changes, anything to the architect side.
Madam Chair?
Are there, are there any questions for Mr. Bennett?
I move that ACPS released the Harkins Company from their contract to renovate Akamak Primary School for convenience.
Second.
There is a motion in second to terminate for convenience. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Madam Chair, I move to authorize the Superintendent and Mr. Bennett to put the Akamak Primary School project back out to bid.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the process for the bidding to go forward on the, on that Akamak Primary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. I will update you as we move forward.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Johnson's gonna tell us about his new contracts, or updated contracts.
Yeah, they're not changed really a whole lot. A lot of the slide language is very similar. This is just to, in order for us to give contracts to teachers who are fully licensed, that's gonna be the one at the top that says employee states, and then there's three things for them to check. It's more just for our own internal processes and for your information for you to look these over. The second contract is for us to give to teachers that we hire that are not yet licensed. So that used to be called an associate's teacher's contract. Been giving legal advice not to call it that. We call it a contracted, long-term substitute. So this is just trying to get a better handle on that. And it's just minor revisions. It's just basically for your information purposes. Okay?
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Beta Transportation.
It doesn't update. Mine hasn't updated, so I don't know.
Hi, everybody. So at our April the fifteenth meeting, there was some discussion regarding the Beta Club trip. Ms. Joy Phillips is here. She is the representative for Beta. At the April fifteenth meeting, at the April fifteenth meeting, Mr. Reader, I'm sorry, you all. I have issues with my voice. But at the meeting, Mr. Reader did present some information regarding the trip. One of them was for venture tours, which was charging twenty thousand dollars per leg of the trip. And then there was also some information about Amtrak. That night, we decided that I would go out and talk to some of my people to find out if we could get the trip at a little bit less expensive cost. So the slideshow that you see on the screen now, I did go out and do that. I contacted eight of the companies that I'm familiar with. And with those requests, I also sent a full copy of the itinerary with the help of Ms. Phillips. Out of the eight that I contacted, only four responded. Out of the four that responded, only three actually submitted a quote. The reason that the fourth one did not submit a quote, he contacted me to let me know that if he could not take the whole trip, he would not take any part of the trip. I was pleased with that because he only, the high school leg of the trip would be interrupted several times. And he said that he didn't think that it would be fair to us because we would incur the cost for him to come all the way back to whatever trips he had in Delaware and then go all the way back to Florida. It would just be entirely too much money. So I said, "Thank you, and we'll move on to something else." So the eight companies that I contacted were IND out of Laurel, Delaware, Wint Transportation out of Richmond, Virginia, Freedom Bus Trips out of Suffolk, Johnson out of Portsmouth, Banks out of Suffolk, Vision Tours, Virginia, Vision Tours is a brokerage. They have companies everywhere. Charter is also a brokerage. They have charters everywhere. And U.S. Coachways, which is also a brokerage, which they have charters everywhere. So Freedom did get back to me. For Freedom, it's gonna be eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for each of the trips, high school, middle school, and elementary school. A ten percent deposit will be required. Johnson is out of Portsmouth, Virginia. Their trip is fifteen thousand dollars per leg of the trip, fifteen for high school, fifteen for middle school, fifteen for elementary school. And then U.S. Coachways, like I said, which is a broker. U.S. Coachways can only provide transportation for the high school trip at a cost of twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars if the payment was made through an HCH system. When I presented this information to the entire school board and to Ms. Only, we were asked to get certificates of insurance. Johnson was the only bus company that issued a certificate of insurance. I did reach out to Freedom this morning because she's the one who had been most engaged with me regarding this, throughout this whole process. And I told her I need it by five o'clock today, or I'm gonna have to cancel your bid. I don't have it. So Johnson is the only one that we have both a security of insurance, I mean, a certificate of insurance, and a price of fifteen thousand dollars. So overall, it's gonna cost us forty-five thousand dollars total. Johnson also said that they pay for everything. Once we pay the fifteen thousand dollars, Akamak County Schools will not have to come out of their pocket for any additional funds, which includes hotel stay, food for the bus drivers, none of that. They take care of all of that. And like I said, we do have a certificate of insurance. I'm not sure what the board is gonna do tonight. However, Ms. Only, I'll let you make that decision. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the process is. That's what I'm saying. My process is I make a choice and my company pays for it. I don't know how Akamak works.
Where are we all paid? Do the terms? And Mr. Reader is here, if anybody has any questions about the information that he presented last time. Are there questions?
I have one. Like, how, for Johnson, how much insurance was that for?
Ms. Only knows. I don't know. So I know when I talked to, her name is Letitia, when I talked to her, she did, she kept throwing out a million dollars. I wasn't paying that close of attention. When I do my trips out of, from my college, they're always at least a million, regardless of if we go an hour away or ten hours away. It's still the same amount.
Everyone I spoke to was ten million.
Ten. So do we need to raise it?
We reached out prior to this to Baycorp, our insurance carrier.
Okay.
And we explained the whole process of what we were looking for. And I had an email back from them with a recommendation of limits for each type, single occurrence, aggregate, that type of thing. I can, I don't have that email with me. I apologize. But I can work with that tomorrow.
I'll, I'll see if I can find Johnson's on here to see what she has listed on here. Like I said, I, the conversation, she kept saying a million because I was not certain. And because I accept a million, I was okay with that. But I will look that up. If I have to go back, I don't have a problem doing that. But if I had, if I had to make a choice, I would probably choose Johnson since it's a flat fee, it's a flat rate. We don't have to pay any extraneous costs. We don't have to add any benefits or amenities to the contract. It's what it is.
To me, it's five million. They got about one million and four million.
Okay.
On Johnson?
Yes.
This is one.
And Ms. Only, I think there was also questions about, this was all still covered even though it was after the school year, even though this occurred during the summer. We're still...
Yes, it's a school-sponsored activity.
So we're good.
We talked about if our people drove buses, what would we do, and what do we need if we contract with somebody. We laid that all out in the email, and they were very thorough when they responded.
So we're confident.
I'll pull that, and I'll forward it to everybody as well.
Madam Chair, just a clarifying question. My recall is that, and I'm asking, am I right in recalling that really Amtrak is far from ideal, particularly for the elementary school kids? You recall, please, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting.
It was, that was not, I think, at this point, if I understand, everything is still on the table. The venture bus, the Amtrak, the Johnson transportation is all still on the table.
That wasn't my understanding. Because had that been my understanding, I would not have taken time out of my day to go and find all these people. I guess my question is, why are we still entertaining something that we know is not gonna work? If it's in the interest of getting more insurance, I can call her tomorrow. I can call her tonight if that's the case.
Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Reader a question?
Yeah.
Is insurance discussion, is a ten million a minimum, or...
That's just what everybody, that's just what I know Vent, Venture has, it's just a ten million. I don't know if there's a, is there a...
In an effort to try to move forward, I think it would be good to go ahead and, and try to pick a, a vendor, and then it would be subject to insurance verification, so that we don't wait another two weeks.
Right. Not, not only that, but I know that Ms. Phillips has, she has to contact the company, I mean, the hotels by Friday, or we lose all of that money as well.
I think the insurance thing can be solved pretty quickly, uh, if, you know, if you want to move forward and subject to that, you know, we do contracts and things like that too, so...
Is that something you can find out by tomorrow, or...
Sure, yeah, I'll just get the Johnson certificate and compare it to what Bay Corp said, and then contact you if it's not the same, and you can see if she can...
Okay. Ms. Phillips, um, what are your thoughts? Just because she has to...
So I am like, super type A, um, and I have booked hotel rooms at the Gaylord, and I have booked them for the night before we're supposed to be there, in case we have to end up on an Amtrak or a bus, and we have to get there early. If we can cancel those rooms, that would save our club money, we would be able to put that out to the kids and the parents. The cost of the hotels and everything these parents incur is already high. It's tough when it's academic kids that deserve so much from us, that we, we talk about these high prices, so we need an answer tonight, or else we're going to incur more costs. Um, we've got to figure out, moving forward, we also have to figure out, if Johnson doesn't make us pay the hotel rooms, I can cancel the hotel rooms I have for the bus drivers. I have two hotel rooms booked, because if we have one driver, they get a room, but if we have two drivers, like we have in past years, then we have to book two rooms. So like, anything we can do at this point, we have got to get locked down, because on May ninth, all of our hotel stuff turns into permanent, and we are paying for at least one night at the hotel, if we don't cancel.
Yes, I have another question, and I don't know who this is before, where is the convention being held, at the Gaylord?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so maybe I'm wrong in misunderstanding that we needed to keep buses down there the whole time for transportation, if you're staying at the Gaylord and the convention's at the Gaylord, you just need a ride down there and a ride up?
So, we need a ride down there and a ride home, and the only thing that is happening off-site is the Beta Night, that Beta is hosting at the Universal Studios. That's like, that's the only non-Beta-y thing we're, experience, we're really able to get the kids, like, everything else, we're competing, we're at events, we're at leadership, um, like Ted Talks types of things, like, that's the only non-Beta-y thing we're doing.
No, I understand.
Madam Chair, I'm asking because I don't know, it, can we literally make a motion with a, with a, um, selection contingent upon the insurability, and if not, is that legal to make a motion for, for, that and an alternate?
Yes, well, um, I guess make a motion for what you want, so there's the venture bus, the Amtrak, and the Johnson transportation.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move, there I go, I move that we accept the proposal from Johnson Bus Company contingent upon the sufficient insurance with the alternative being venture bus company.
Second.
Motion in a second to use Johnson and Venture as backup.
Do we have a discussion?
Yes, yes.
I'm just, and, and Dr. Johnson, I apologize, I don't mean to, I just don't understand where we're at with sufficient insurance, is a five million sufficient, one million, like, uh, Ms. Handy says for her school?
No, it's five million.
I did, I, I think if we're going to do this, we need, we need to figure out what sufficient insurance is.
We were going to use the recommendation from Bay Corp, who's our insuring, we sent an email asking for different limits, so we were going to compare the Johnson to, to what we received from Bay Corp.
Yes.
Um, so if we were to go with the Amtrak, then, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, then there would not be transportation from Amtrak to the facility and to the Beta Night? Is that correct?
We, we did talk to several companies down in Florida that would transport while they're down there.
And what was those costs?
Not much, it was like, just like there was like, um, we looked at prices of, um, regular, like, public transit, we looked at prices of other companies, it was like about like, three, four dollars a kid per trip, just depending on, it wasn't much.
But is that public transportation, were they all going to be able to ride together, or is it going to be...
On public transit, no, not, the other one, he never got back, we just like, whoa, but I was waiting to see which route we were going as far as trying to, but there are, there are options.
And the Gaylord has shuttle buses, someone told me that, is that, so there's shuttles?
But there is also, there's also another factor in, because one of the high schools isn't staying at the Gaylord, so they need transportation every day, but it's only eight kids.
Do you know how much transportation Gaylord has there, I mean, and all of these kids, I mean, is that going to be...
It's an enormous complex.
They, they do not, I've called Gaylord, they do not transport from Amtrak to the hotel, they do not transport from Gaylord to Beta Night, they, they offered us nothing. And, um, we did contact though, um, we did contact the local school district down there, it's, it starts with an O, Orlansa, Orlamba, that's in Kissimmee, and their transportation director was very forthcoming with us and said, "We might be able to work something out in realms of transportation." My concern, if we take Amtrak, is our club has tried very hard this year to put together a group talent that is going to rival some of these art schools that they go to just for performing arts, and I'm concerned, we're not going to be able to get our stuff down there, if we were to take something like Amtrak.
They, they don't have way to transport it down, or...
No, no, they have looked out at the Amtrak out of Richmond, so there is no, there won't be enough storage for our stuff.
Have you looked into any other, like, if you did go with Amtrak, another way to get it down there?
So that involves us taking like a U-Haul, which would be a per day cost, and then the gas cost, which, if we had to do something like that and the county didn't pay for, that cost would be turned over to our parents, and that would add an extra like, hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars to their already, I think it's seven hundred and fifty dollar bills.
Will one of the parents drive that U-Haul, or whoever, or somebody, somebody volunteer, I guess, I'm just asking?
I, I'm praying they would, if, if not, I'm praying my husband lives another day with me and he'd drive a U-Haul, but that, if we, if we were able to take, we have broken our stuff down this year to get it under the tour bus, last year, we had problems with our phone board set, so we have broken our PVC piping, we've learned how to tie our PVC piping, we've got banners that you can attach and roll down, like, we have like, blocked it for a tour bus.
Thank you.
Just, if I could just remind the board, I, I know Mr. Lawrence is not here tonight, but, uh, I think the last meeting, he was trying to discourage the board from the Amtrak option, just, just reminding you of that.
I, I understand, I'm just trying to dissolve the fact together.
No problem.
Madam Chair, I call for the question. Can we vote?
Motion in a second to use Johnson, as long as the insurance is okay, and if not, to go with the second choice, Venture. Who's in favor of this?
Me. Opposed? Okay, I'm going to abstain. Oh, it was, yes, eight yeses and one extension. Retention bonus criteria. Ms. Only? What's wrong?
I think the big, I don't know. Big one? I think it's the yellow one.
TJ used the big one, I want the...
Good evening, on, uh, April twenty-sixth, I had received an email from Mrs. Turner talking about the retention bonus and retired, non-contracted employees versus SSMs, and then again, on April thirtieth, I received another email that she believed the school board should discuss the implications of giving the SSMs a retention bonus, and asked me to speak about the rationale of giving the SSMs a bonus, since they're not full-time or contracted, and I would like to give this information because I would, I don't want any confusion as to that there's anything arbitrary about it, or that we're not being transparent, so that's why I'm here tonight, thank you for coming, um, well, I'm here anyway, but that's why I'm up here. Well, so, in, in Mr. Lawrence's, um, in Mr. Lawrence's presentation at Shinkatig Elementary, he had stated that the retention bonuses for full-time contracted employees, in addition, workers, uh, workers working seventy-five percent of the time would receive the bonus. Also, in Dr. Johnson's motion, she had said that she wanted it the same as how we did it last year, so now I'm going to try to go through a little bit, because I know everybody likes to have something in writing. So that was the criteria, we were going to do full-time contracted employees who signed that they will return for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and non-contracted workers who work at least seventy-five percent of the time, and sign that they will return for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and work at least seventy-five percent of the time for that subsequent year as well.
So the student support monitors got the bonus last year?
Yes, I think we did, did we, Jason? Not sure that they did. I know that we looked at seventy-five percent, but I think that was for our cafeteria workers, because we have cafeteria workers that come like every day.
Right, so, so we're doing what we did last year, or we're doing, we're doing what we did last year and the student support monitors?
Yes, because I, that was my understanding from Mr. Whitford, that we were to look at student support monitors as well.
So have we, have they signed the paper, have we given them the bonus?
We have not given anybody the bonus, the bonus will come on May sixteenth, and we are working on that right now for all full-time contracted employees, because we knew that that part was not a question at all, and dependent on what tonight is, we have the paperwork ready, we have the eligibility determined, and we'll move forward with that. I'm not saying it would be May sixteenth, it might be May thirtieth or thirty-first, but it would still meet the state criteria. So I wanted to go over, um, some of the non-contracted workers, so you could see how we figured this out. So for the SSMs, which is the biggest category, we have thirty, uh, positions which are currently filled, there is some turnaround in these positions, but of those, nineteen were eligible to receive this bonus. On child nutrition services, we have a number of workers who work hourly, we had twenty-three who work hourly, and eleven of them are eligible, based on the seventy-five percent criteria, eleven of them are eligible to receive the bonus. In custodial and grounds, we have ten workers who work hourly and do not have a contract, six of them would be eligible. We have two part-time, you see it next, and the bottom, I'll come to them last, uh, we have the retired bus drivers and bus aides, which at first blush last year, they did not receive it, but if you remember, they came and forced and spoke to us at one of our meetings in a Tompkins, and we did give it to them.
And they did get it?
Yes.
I did not realize that.
Yes, the retired bus drivers and bus aides did receive it last year.
Because they came to that meeting?
You all said, it was my understanding, that you all voted to do it after they came to the meeting and spoke, and my first time that I did it, I did not put them down there, but they did receive it. Translators, we've received one, I'm in touch with Teresa, who's out of town, we have to look and see that they need the, that they work the required number of days, but only one have we received. We have a teacher, an SSO, who work full-time every day, hourly, and because of their VRF status, there's only two of them, and then the part-time that I want, referred to earlier, we have a teacher who is electing to work two blocks next year, has signed a contract to work two blocks. TJ and I discussed it, and we were proposing that that teacher receive a thousand dollar bonus. We also have two retired, uh, custodials who do not have full-time contracts, but have assigned locations and buildings where they work approximately four hours a day, five days a week, and they work probably a hundred percent of the year, just like the teacher, and we were proposing to give them a thousand dollars. So these are all the special, special cases that I could come up with, and how we were determining that, um, for your review.
Yes.
Um, so, the seventy-five percent, um, can you kind of define that a little bit more?
Sure.
Because I'm thinking, what happens if somebody during the course of the year becomes ill, and they have to have a time to leave, I mean, is that going to be accounted against them, I mean...
Yes, it's counted against them. These are hourly employees, they do not have sick leave, so, uh, just to, to, here's, here's food service, they actually look at the number of days that they work per month, and how many days could be worked per month, and the cutoff is seventy-five percent, so if someone is ill, then they, and they miss, don't make the seventy-five percent because they are ill, they're not included in that.
So then, what do we do, do we make them pay it back, or can we pay it back?
Oh, you mean for the next year, no, this is just to determine eligibility, if someone is involuntarily ill, we do not make them pay it back. Well, obviously, they do voluntarily, yeah, but if somebody is ill, we have had that happen, if somebody is ill, we do not make, we have not made them pay that back.
I heard a little different, that's why I was just asking then, so...
Well, if I...
It's in the wording. It's in the wording.
So if you want to reach out to me later on, with that, I'd be happy to look into.
Madam Chair, um, I ask this natureally, kind of, these bonuses are already approved, and this is on here to, for action, I'm confused, if the bonuses are already approved, what...
Not for this, not for this group, not for this, not for this group, we, the bon, I think the bonuses that got approved were, this only categorizes it as full, full-time contracted.
But, but Mr. Lawrence also said for those, uh, hourly workers who work seventy-five percent of the days, so it was my understanding, I would have interpreted it that they work, but that's why I want every...
Well, I, I'm struggling, don't call me out of order, please, because I made the motion on April first at Shinkatig Elementary, having listened very carefully, and so my question remains, so...
I'll give you an example of, 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 uh, of, of the situation, I'll give you an example. So, um, I got a call from a retired teacher who teaches a class, and she's very, um, dedicated, and comes back year after year, now she's collecting her retirement, so she didn't have a contract, so she did not get a bonus last year, and I believe she was told she's not getting a bonus this year, but, the part-time SSMs who are nor, neither contracted or full-time are getting a bonus, they are getting a bonus, so it's not going over well, and like, for example, I just, this is going to create a lot of disten, a lot of distinction and, um, distinction, and we're, there's going to be a lot of phone calls, you have twenty-eight people that work in food services, twenty-three and eleven of them are going to get a bonus, and the others are not, so I, I'm going to generate some phone calls and some...
I, I understand that, the point, I, I promise, I, I think I understand the point, the point that I'm trying to separately articulate is that, on April first, my motion was to accept the retention bonuses as presented, and I have the presentation up, and just as Ms. Only was just saying, I don't, I'm not just trying to agree with her, I'm just reading, it says, "In addition, workers working seventy-five percent of the time would receive the bonus," it's already been approved, so, receiving, I, I respectfully acknowledge that some people are going to be upset, I'm still trying to understand what it is we're voting on when we voted on this on April one. I'm just trying to understand.
So the food service workers, they did receive it last year, and it was similar to that?
All, but not all of them?
The food, well, the same type thing, you know, but then maybe there were twenty-three and eleven got it, that was, that was definitely, Mr. Whitford, I'll look into SSMs, and I believe you're right, that they did not, but the food service workers did get it, we have not given, uh, them to long-term substitutes last year, and we were not this year, because they cannot sign a paper that they will work next year, because if Mr. Johnson has a good summer, we may not have a position for them, whereas the SSMs have signed a paper, but we haven't given any bonus, but the SSMs have signed a paper that they intend to work next school year. next school year, and there is certainly going to be a position for them, as well as the ones that I have up here.
So, Madam Chair, what's-
So then, we don't need to vote? This is already, we're good?
Well, this is my interpretation of what I thought the vote was, and if, if, this is what I felt the interpretation was. If I am wrong, please.
Okay, so, so when I got the phone call from the very angry retired teacher who, maybe we could silence our cell phones, just for the meeting. She is getting, those folks are getting the bonus, or they are not?
The long-term substitutes are not, as we read it.
And that's what the, when a teacher is retired, but she's fully accredited, she comes back to teach 4th grade, and she's got a group of 4th graders all year long.
She's considered a long-term sub. She's considered a long-term sub. If, if you all choose to change that, then-
But what about the retired bus drivers? They're not considered long-term?
They will be working next year and every single year, no matter what. As many of them as we can get, they will be working.
Madam Chair, this says, "To retain bonuses, the retention bonuses for all full-time contracted employees, period. In addition, workers working 75% of the time would receive the bonus." She's working 75% of the time, right?
If this board interprets it that way, then we can-
Period, then there's the next sentence. Is there, does anybody see it different?
But will she be working, she, he, will they be working next year?
If they sign, saying that they intend to return-
If there's a position, yes. On, on all of those up there, there are positions. That, that's, that's the only reason I differentiate it.
I see.
But that, that's, that's the only reason for me to see the difference in that. But if this board chooses to accept that, then that's fine.
Just to give, just to give some context, I believe there's only three long-term subs that have worked the entire school year. So, I mean, another, uh, solution would be for me to actually write them a contract going into next year, that does, you know, that would lock them in, so to speak.
Do you currently have a contract that's their principal name, correct?
Uh, not, let me, let me rephrase. Not a teaching contract, but like, uh, I could look into the possibility of, uh, like, we have a per, we have a permanent sub, we have permanent substitutes in each, in each book, correct? Are they allowed to?
Teaching assistants?
Permanent substitutes. We can look into some options.
Mr. Johnson, would that mess up their VRS benefits if they sign a contract?
Yeah, that's what I'd have to, that's, that's what I'd have to look into and make sure it, it would not. I wouldn't, I wouldn't give them some, they wouldn't accept a contract that's going to interfere with their VRS.
Right, I totally agree.
Any more questions, or?
Thank you, Ms. Only.
Okay, so the budget, do you want us to look into that and get back to you? Or TJ, did I say?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you get to stay and talk about the budget adoption?
So the governor signed the budget Friday or Saturday. He assigned, he signed what the General Assembly had passed. I think he had a change as relates to facilities projects and post-secondary education, but there was no change as relates to K-12, um, education. So I just put this up for you, just as a reminder, that these are what we had approved in the previous budget, that we had adopted as our proposed budget. Then, the shortage after the General Assembly proposal was just over $192,000. Um, Mr. Lawrence met with his Budget Committee, and his proposed cuts were the three full-time athletic directors to save $279,000. He did propose that we had three additional athletic director supplements, so that each high school would have an athletic director for male sports and one for female sports. So they'd have two athletic directors in the current supplemented position, as opposed to one. So I took that off the savings. And then, the other, uh, proposed cut was a guidance counselor for alt-ed, virtual Virginia and home-based, being that there's approximately, um, 80 children that they would be a guidance counselor for, whereas, even though he didn't propose to add it, he thought the much bigger need would be, say, a middle school to have another one there, because they only have one for their number of students. So that would be a next year's consideration. So those are proposed cuts by Mr. Lawrence and the Budget Committee of just over $321,000. That leaves $129,000 surplus that I'd like to put in contingency, because if there's one thing we realized by some of the presentations earlier tonight, you just never know what's going to happen. So, um, that is our proposal. We would like to get the budget passed tonight. We just got this information like over the weekend, so that's why you didn't have it previous, um, because we want to get contracts out, we want to put the new budget in our new ERP system, and we need to roll over the new salary scales. So, um-
This is fairly straightforward. Y'all feel comfortable voting tonight, or would you want to push it to another meeting? Okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so we vote on this, and that cuts out, what's she showing here?
Just that. Everything else that was presented before that is still in?
Yes. Is there a motion to accept the Budget Committee's recommendation with Mr. Lawrence?
I make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee's recommendation for August of the year 2026.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to accept these, um, Budget Committee amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, one no. Thank you. So Superintendent Report. Um, Mr. Lawrence is not here, but he's provided us with a, the graduation list of events. Hope everybody can make it to at least a few of those. And then, next up, we have school board member comments. Mr. Spadell?
I did a whole lot, I just wanted to thank, maybe you already loved us all. How good the grass looks here at Shinkatake.
It's always important to a Shinkataker, isn't it? How your lawn looks.
That's all.
Dr. Johnson? Just two things. Um, well, first, I definitely, because this is home, want to thank the hosts. Um, I'm an alum from here. Two, our Acomet County Public Schools teachers. I know that this is Teacher Appreciation Week. My hope is that you feel appreciated to the maximum extent throughout the year. The only other thing is, I wanted to say thanks for, um, the sympathy card from this board. I want to say thanks to Central Office for your expression of sympathy. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to every individual who reached out to me because my mom died.
I just wanted to say thank you for, Shinkatake Combine, for hosting us this evening, and thank you to all the students and staff who have come out and participated.
I also want to thank, um, Mr. Kilman, um, for his gracious invitation here tonight. Also, Mr. Outen, um, for that wonderful performance by his group that was excellent. I would also ask, um, that with the culture and climate, the way it is today, I would just ask that we learn the new language when we refer to groups of people, i.e. when we refer to their gender, when we refer to their race, when we refer to their ethnicity, and when we refer to their disability. Um, I just find it very difficult to listen when someone uses the word handicap. That bothers me when it's actually disability. So if we could just kind of, I don't know how you're going to do it, um, if you don't hear it every day, it's probably not going to click, but, um, it's not fair, and it's not equitable, and it's discriminatory. Thank you.
I attended the Little Feet Meet at Arcadia High School, and that was a ton of fun, and it was very well organized, and a big, uh, thank you to Jennifer Anderson, her staff. And I know there was a whole lot of people involved in making that day happen, but it sure made a lot of little people very happy, and it was a wonderful event, good for our students and our staff, and our families, and our community, and our division. So, very enjoyable. That's all I have.
I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Kilman as well, and, and the band was great.
Yes.
I just want to say, kind of, I guess, reiterate what Dr. Johnson had said about our teachers. I said thankful, not just our teachers, but all our staff that come back year after year. Um, I know it's not easy, but I do really truly appreciate, and the ones that I've reached out and are able to reach out and talk with, or they reached out to me, um, I just want to know that thank you. I mean, we, we, we need you guys to be out there teaching our students, and, and, um, it's not an easy job, but, you know, they're going to be our next school board members, and teachers, and maybe even the president. So thank you all for doing what you're doing day in, day out. Um, I also want to thank you for the board, for the sympathy card, for passing my brother. I thank you all. And, uh, that's it.
Mr. White?
Yes, you're very short. I'd say, again, I'd like to thank Shinkatake Combine School, excellent band, especially that's first, like, hey, see what second and third do. And it's just good to see more people coming out to these meetings. Now, thank y'all. Yes, all the night.
Mr. Whitford?
Uh, nothing, sir.
Mr. Neil?
Just to reiterate, thank you to our host, and I really enjoyed the band as well. Like to see the students get their recognition, and I'll wrap it up with that.
Thank you. Okay, staff and student comments. Ms. Colby Burford?
Good evening. Oh, sorry.
I'll start. Identify yourself and your name with your 911 address. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Individuals may not reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Specify the nature of your remarks. Speakers who have previously, previously spoken on a subject for public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or appropriate staff member. Anyone who would like to rep, present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation 24 hours in advance for a review by the staff for appropriateness. All questions shall be directed to the chairperson, who it will, who will, at her discretion, solicit the response from the appropriate staff member. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Colby Burford. I'm a teacher, or kindergarten teacher at Shinkatake Elementary School. My address is 8128 B.B. Road, Shinkatake, Virginia. I'm here tonight to talk about the field trip policy that was already approved tonight. Um, so the first thing I wanted to talk about before something was added to it that I'm a little disheartened about, um, was the line that talked about how no student in Acomet County shall pay for transportation for a field trip within Acomet County. While that sounds wonderful, and it's awesome, and I appreciate it, I know for me, the majority of our field trips are not within Acomet County. Majority of our field trips are all the way in Maryland, because there's very limited things to do here in Acomet County. Uh, we love our trip to the Island Creamery, that's a wonderful, like, local field trip we do. However, we're only using a bus for about two hours, if that, more like an hour and a half. So obviously, the cost for a bus for that local field trip is going to be significantly lower than when we go to the Salisbury Zoo, or when we go to the Pumpkin Patch. And so, that cost is what is really hard for our parents, the more expensive when we're going farther away, and we're having a bus for a longer period of time. And so, it'd be nice if the board could consider in the future, since this policy's already been approved, um, not charging our students for transportation for any field trips. If it's really that important to us that they have this instructional opportunity, I think we can find a way to do that. Um, the second thing, I just want to, if, if someone could give me clarification, that's great. If not, maybe a follow-up email. What was voted on tonight is for any field trip, not just field trips where it's multiple days in a hotel, but any field trip, which means my kids, when we go to the Pumpkin Patch, every parent who wants to be a chaperone has to get a background check, do the online modules, do a TV test, because I can tell you, it takes a long time. I only had one parent willing to go through all of that process last year to be a volunteer. It took three months for her to get all of her stuff done, from getting a doctor's appointment to get that TV test, and then going back to get it read, getting her background checked. She had to do it outside of Acomet County, but it doesn't matter, getting paperwork all filled out, getting all this stuff. It takes a long time. Our first field trip is in September. We go to the Apple Orchard. That was the first thing we started this year. My parents are not going to be ready to go to, to the Apple Orchard, and I'm not taking 20 kindergarten students without chaperones. It is too much. We rely heavily on them, especially in the beginning of the year, when they're five years old, and they want to go everywhere. And I get it. They're young, and they're having fun. But we rely on the chaperones. I don't feel that a person who's only going on a sha, a, a field trip, not coming into the building, not coming in to work with students, should have to go through that whole process to be a chaperone, because you are limiting the amount of parents who are willing to go through that process, and it's going to cause teachers to not be able to take their kids on field trips. Because I'm not going to put the liability of me taking all those kids if I don't have enough people willing to go through that long process. So I just wanted some clarification on that, because if that's the case, you've really limited the amount of things we can do, and it's really disappointing.
Thank you. Joy Phillips, again.
So I'm Joy Phillips. I work at Nandoa Middle School. Um, and I just wanted to say, like, during comments, thank you. Thank you for funding our transportation to Orlando. I appreciate it. I know the kids appreciate it. They are so looking forward to our trip. I also want to give a special shout-out to, um, Kamisha Handy for finding those additional bids, for working hard on that, and allowing us to have affordable transportation. Um, I also wanted to speak, like Colby did, on the policy about the volunteers and the background checks. Um, I think Acomet County has put into place some very good systems, including our Raptor system, and I would like to see the board look at the Raptor system, which we're already paying on, in order to allow our parents to chaperon field trips. They just take their ID, they scan it, it comes up with a background check to know if they're like criminals or sex abusers and all that stuff.
I believe it only, it's only for sex offenders.
Okay.
That's all it's, that's all it's-
Which would be an easier step, like Ms. Burford said, in order to put it into practice. Um, I also wanted to invite everyone to come out when we have our parent presentation for our Nandoa Middle School Club Beta before we leave. Um, I will send you an email, and you can come see our talented students perform with what they are going to take to the stage in Nationals. And also, we're going to have our 8th grade graduation on June 13th at 6:00 PM at Nandoa High School. Come out and see our 8th grade Beta students get recognized, and also, all our other awesome Braves, as they get set to become warriors at Nandoa High School. Thank you so much, again, for our transportation and for all you do.
Thank you. The board will now adjourn to close session.
Madam Chair, I'm here. The school board committee closes meeting for the purposes of my personnel matters for discussion as permitted under subdivision 8.1 subsection 2.2, that's 3711 of the Code of Virginia, consisting of the following. Part-time appointment 1, professional reservations 2, professional retirements 2, classified regulations 3, classified retirements 4, retracted classified retirement 1, extended leave 1, status changes 4, substitute appointments 3, hiring 1. Also, for student matters, as permitted under subdivision 8.2 of subsection 2.2, that's 3711 of the Code of Virginia, consisting of the following issues. Two reemission, excuse me, four reemission cases, two expulsions, one GED student, and let's see.
Motion in a second to go into closed session to review everything that Mr. Taylor just said. All in favor?